Call the village board. Regular meeting for September sixteenth. To order. Rule call. Yes, can you please pick the role of.
Trustees Dubak. Here. Garn.
Here.
Curran. He's here. Cron.
Here.
Moreno.
Here.
Plurk here, President Seacard.
Yes. All members are present. Even the trustee current is on zoom here. Can you hear us, Donnie? Great, thank you. Next item, everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the republic which we stand, one nation, under our own. An individual with no degree of justice.
Next item, approval of agenda as presented.
Right, Colonel, approve agenda as presented.
Second. Okay, it goes to Garn. Motion by Cron, second by Garn to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion passes unanimously. Next item is. Part of a positive recognition program. I have been working with Jessica on. And so I have a proclamation that I am going to read into the record.
Oh, what's it bring?
Oh, public comment, I am so sorry, I.
I'm all for the positive recognition.
We'll go back up. Public comment on agenda items, two minutes for first and fourteen minutes. For topic, is there anyone here for public comments? Mr. Waller.
David Mollner, four ninety, Forest Drive, Somerset, Wisconsin. As a member of planning commission. Myself and a couple of the planning commission members have been talking. This is in reference to the holding ponds at Wine Sap. So. We have come to the feelings that the holding ponds at Wine Sap, I understand that they're on the punch list still to be worked on. But we became uncomfortable after the meeting. With the comments that these holding ponds will become the responsibility of the owners to maintain at a later date. As we, the village, are responsible for the ponds. Planning Commission does believe that the village will be responsible for maintaining, it keeps the holding ponds. And the retaining walls in operational condition. And relieve the homeowners of any responsibility. As the homeowners are going to come in here, purchase a home. And Capstone does do a very fine job, I gotta, I gotta say that. You know, they're purchasing a good priced home, a quality home. You know, in the three, four hundred thousand range. Some of them are going to be strapped to be doing some work on retaining walls that if they fail. So when I went to the Wisconsin websites and the DNR websites, I see that. There is no actual codes, what they're spelling out. Fact that it's underneath a certain height and doesn't need engineering actually. But it does say that is has to be retained from infiltration, recommending that the ground is between the rocks. A substantial base underneath it. And, you know, filter fabric behind it. So if a homeowner is buying a home that he's going to possibly, you know, live in for twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty years, and hopefully sixty, seventy years. In our community, you know, I think that retaining wall should last. Way more than they're living there, it should be lasting a hundred years. So I think that the village needs to have a spec. On how the retaining walls would be built. And the structure under the retaining walls and what they're holding back. And a retaining wall that is in somebody's backyard, as in Wine Sap, in the beginning developments, there are retaining walls in the back. Hold in the, in the holding ponds in the backyards. I think that it is the city's responsibility to maintain, cut the grass. And keep the beauty, the beauty of the rock wall around that watershed. These watersheds are insider developments. And they should be a good looking site. They should not be fenced in, looking like over the school, which to me looks like crap. Or down here at the Meadows. Or, I mean, up here at the Waterside Park where it's, you know, I mean, I get it, it's to keep the people out of it, but it looks horrible. You know, I mean, Somerset's got to be something good on the map.
And the look, the look are first. Where. To tackle this initially, a planning commission for a recommendation.
There'll be a recommendation, planning commission should be on the agenda. But like I said. The thing that is irritating to some of us, one is to keep that, the comment was that it'll go to the owners, property owners responsibility. When the state says the builder of the retaining wall, it's their responsibility. The builder can't be found, the owner of the property will be the owner of the prop, of the owner of the retaining wall. But the fact that we got to maintain the ponds. And we know what the price is for dredging the ponds we have right now. It's pretty substantial. And I said, well, last we want to do would be rebuilding retaining walls around ponds for neighbors. So.
It don't. Do you have two, we've gone over the two minute, I don't mean to cut you off, but I think we've got the point, we'll make sure it's properly on the planning commission agenda for us to discuss. To make a recommendation of the village board when the planning commission has a recommendation.
Which is the last statement. We do not feel we had proper information from the beginning of Wine Sap. To oversee and look at all the prints, because there was no spec on the prints originally for what was and how was the retaining wall to be built. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Anyone else for public comment? Any other public comments? Otherwise, we will move on now to. Information of positive recognition. I'll read this proclamation, whereas the village of Somerset is proud to recognize individuals and organizations who dedication, leadership. And service has significantly contributed to the betterment of our community and whereas these individuals have demonstrated. Exceptional commitment to civic engagement, public service and community development through their actions, character and collaboration with fellow residents, business owners. And public officials. And whereas their efforts have strengthened the fabric of Somerset and fostered a spirit of unity and pride among our citizens. Whereas the village acknowledges the importance of celebrating those who. Exemplify the values of responsible leadership. As a, as reflected in the community vision for a thriving and forward thinking Somerset. Now therefore, I, Ryan S. Seacard, village president on behalf of the village board and the citizen summer to reclaim. The sixteenth of summer as a day of recognition for the following people. Debbie Balarjin of the Somerset Champions for the adopted pot program. Debbie Kohler for Somerset Champions Adopted Pot Program. For Joanne Hadger, Hardier. For Somerset Champions for the hometown heroes program. For Becca Whitlock of Somerset Champions for initiating the marketing and branding artwork and presentation. And for Josh. And I'm going to apologize right now, Seth Carr of the American Legion Post. One eleven.
Sweetser, sweet, sweet, sweetser, it's, it's hard.
Yeah.
Be sweetser or something, it's very hard.
Yeah.
It's like Sweetser.
It's very hard. You're good, thank you.
Thank you, Julia, of American Legion Post one eleven commander for the hometown heroes program. For their outstanding contributions to the village, we extend our deepest gratitude and commend them for their unwilling dedication to our community. In witness thereof, I, I have here who set my hand to. Cause the seal of the village of summer to be affixed this sixteenth of September twenty twenty-five. There's no action on it, it's just a proclamation that I made, so what. Jessica and I have been working on. Quarterly or monthly. We, I purchased a couple hundred of these little post-it cards rather than a letter being sent. And Jessica created a nice template wording and. Re- notifies them with their recognition and then. When we do it monthly or quarterly, those people will be read into the record for their positive recognition, so.
Did we tell them this?
Yep, they, they are all notified, they received the notes.
I was gonna say what it did.
No, we, we, we told they didn't have to come.
Oh, alright.
But. Yes. So that is one of the things I wanted to establish when I came on the village board is recognizing people for doing good things in the community. Right, but I will, I will welcome your. Anyone that feels wants to be recognized, so just always just let me know. And. Just prove to do the round of applause now, that's. Moving on. Consent agenda, I am requesting to remove the village water and sewer bills from the consent agenda.
Right, Colonel, second.
Do we want to move, remove Wine Sap also because of what Dave Wimmer said?
I would like to remove Wine Sap and Pine Vale for a different reason.
Yeah.
So C one and two. Your motion is second to remove C one and two.
Okay.
Alright, motion by Garn, second by Plurk, remove C one and two. All there to say aye.
Aye.
Any others to remove from the consent agenda?
We taking a motion on the removing the village water sewer bills too?
Yes, Ryan did that.
Oh, yes, I did, but to me, I don't think we, I think we forgot the role, you know.
Oh, sorry, let's redo that.
There's a motion by ourselves, second by Cron, all those in favor say aye.
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 Say, all those opposed say nay. Right. Any other items removed from the consent agenda?
What was the finance personnel employee handbook updates and village holiday hours?
Alright, yeah, I can briefly cover those if you want, otherwise we can remove them and talk more in depth if that's.
It's fine if you want to just touch base on them, was this something that just talked about?
Personnel. Play handbook update was. When it was revised a few months ago. The J eight counter was working off an old copy and some of the language in other areas was incorrect. And then.
So that was from the finance and personnel agenda two months ago then?
No, the meeting we just had.
Just had, and along with that, there was the recommendation to. I'm finding the memo here, please bear with me.
Basically to be in keeping with state statute.
Yeah. And, yeah, and just updating language also for the leave of absences. Clarifying. More. Structure to the language.
Was that, was that all this just discussed at today's finance and personnel or was it at the finance and personnel from a couple of months ago?
Discussed an hour ago today.
No, I'd like to remove that from the.
It's the same changes.
I'm looking at, move that from consent agenda.
Okay, is there a motion, Donnie might fix a motion to remove the play havoc, is there a second?
Second.
Well, second by Cron.
My, my, my motion was F N one and was village holiday hours also discussed an hour ago?
Yes, it was. Second Andrea's left.
Yes.
I can't remember what she said, wasn't that what I do?
Since F one and two.
It was, the village holiday hours was to correct. How the holiday hours are used due to the work schedule on, you know, during summer hours. And the rest of the year with the Friday schedule, so it just was to reflect how holidays. Are stated in the handbook with reflection to. The, the Friday.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday work schedule.
If it's a Thursday, Friday, they're going to take off Wednesday at noon.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman, I, my motion is to remove six F and one and two and put that on.
I was just trying to explain what, what happened, so, yeah, okay.
The reason being is something that was just done an hour ago is not up for us to approve and consent agenda unless we have the documents in front of us to review.
Yeah.
It was done two months ago, I remember that, I would have any problem with it, but I.
Not a problem, not a problem, is there a, there is a second, there is a second, all those in favor to remove F one and two.
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Opposed say nay, motion carried, yeah, sleep, anything else to remove? Otherwise, I would call for a motion to approve the rest of the consent to items, which would be six A, six C one, uh, no, six D. Six E one and two and six G.
Home most proof.
I'll second.
Motion by Garn, second by Plurk, all of the fair to say aye.
Aye.
Will say nay. Motion passes unanimously. So we'll tackle first before the new business. I have pulled through the consent agenda, which was six B, water and sewer bills. I make a motion to approve the water and sewer bills, but. Table the well Riley bill. Till next month, the president of the firm is on vacation and out of the country, there has been no chance to. Discuss with him, the concerns that Donnie's brought forward. So that's why I'm asking to table the well Riley bill. But my motion is to table well Riley bill and prove all other water and sewer bills.
Frank, I'm second.
Motion by Seacard, second by Cron. All those in favor say aye.
Discussion, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Yep.
Under discussion, there was a seventeen thousand four hundred and eleven dollar bill for the repair for HUD and Maine under general bills. Is that for, it was to fix excavating for HUD and Maine repair? My question is that, was that for the water main break?
Yes.
Yes.
Would that, would that be under general bills or would that be underwater and sewer bills?
It should be under water. Related expense.
I just wanted to clarify that because it was falling under the general bills and that's, I, I was wondering if that. Is that going to be moved over then, I, I'd be willing to approve them bills if that was moved to water, if that's where it's supposed to go.
Yeah, it should, I'll talk with Andrea tomorrow morning and get that allocated in the right spot, thanks, I need to catch you there.
Thank you.
So with that correction, any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the water and sewer bills with the most of the table, the well Riley bill and the correction of the. Item brought forward by Donnie, any other discussion? All of the fair to say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item that was pulled from the agenda. Six C one Wine Sap Prairie first edition replat.
I both, both wanted to work at my request. And I just wanted to make sure that the motion to approve the final plans would be contingent on executing the development agreements for those five.
Are the development agreements dependent upon the contracts? And getting some of that stuff fixed?
Not for, not for these, these is a new project.
Okay, then, okay.
Any other discussion about Wine Sap Prairie first edition replat?
So the motion that we're asking for here is to approve the addition replat? Not, not to handle any of the other issues and moving forward with that, we're just approving the replat because I had some questions. Are we agreeing to approve a less than ten thousand square foot? Lot in that addition? On that replat, there's, there's two. Two of the, with the setbacks in that area, I was concerned about it. I, I was having trouble with my computer, I apologize, I was trying to pull it up. But I was hoping to get these in writing to, to look at them and, but one of those lots was less than ten thousand square feet. The other lot was just shortly over ten thousand square feet, which is very small sided with setbacks.
Are you talking Wine Sap or Pineville?
I'm talking about Wine Sap.
Okay, I don't have any better ones, what's up, Eric? Thank you.
You guys, my power card for a lot of.
There was one, there was, there was one lot that was under, under sixty-five feet wide. And I, with our setbacks on that, I mean, they'd have to put a pretty narrow. House in there, is that something that we want to be looking at, I, I've heard a lot from, from individuals having them stack these houses up on top of each other. And I'm just wondering if, if they, if we are, and in fact. Just a lot, you know, allowing these. These lots to be at a significantly smaller size just because they fit into a, a plot.
So a lot area for, a lot area of minimum for single family on a P U D is seventy-six hundred square feet. A lot for us needs to be sixty-five.
Donnie, did you hear it, this is a P U D, a planned unit development, so that, that lots can vary in size.
They have some lots out there that are.
That's well above the minimum requirement of seventy-six hundred square feet, is that what you said?
Seventy-six hundred, two homes are six thousand square feet per unit. So those are.
I'm just asking the question, I mean, you know, I'm not too familiar with. The, the development aspect of it, other than this kind of caught my eye and I've seen a couple of smaller ones in Pine Vale that were approved from previous, you know. Board decisions and, and that's why I'm just asking if that's what we're doing, if, if the rest of the board is okay with that and seventy-six hundred square feet is, is what we're going to be putting out there and.
When it, when it's a, I, I have said what you're getting at, Donnie, and it is a valid point to bring up discussion. But when it's a planned unit development, the lot sizes can vary. Which gives the developer some flexibility on those lot sizes.
But we approve those, we approve those lots at them, so.
We have, we have already approved. Some of these, yes, the Wine Sap is, Wine Sap is back for us because. Well, can you re-explain why Wine Sap came back because of the two year?
Statutorily, the, they ran out of time to the first edition due to their punchless delay. For that satisfaction, so. Wisconsin statute. Kicks in and then they have to go through the replating, which. That allows the state of Wisconsin, St. Hartley, to do another review and then approve that plan or object to it.
So I have a question then, is, is these the same sizes of lots that were in the previous plant that was submitted and approved? And all we're doing is basically reapproving it because of a timing factor?
Yeah, Chuck, Chuck said yes. I don't, do you have any other comment, Chuck?
No, it's just that, it's just because of the time delays and everything else and, nothing to my knowledge has changed and.
Okay. That being said, I'll ask, I'll just ask the question again. Is that something that, that the rest of the board and, and is, you know, it's up for discussion and I'm just asking. Is, you know, ten thou, I mean, they're settling, so I, but is that what we want to do, is we want to put up, you know, ten thousand or less than ten thousand square foot? Because on the backside of a couple of those, it was only fifty-one, fifty-one feet, so it's got to be. It's, on the front side, it's got to be a little wider in order to get the, the square footage there and the setbacks in place.
Donnie, I think you said it best already, these houses are selling, so I would say, you know, it's definitely a market and people. Like the smaller, some people are okay with the smaller lot sizes, I mean, myself personally.
The neighbor may buy it as a second layer lot, park stuff on too, I mean, there's, it's just, it's an option for someone that's not a lot, I think.
Millennials and Gen Zs don't like them both as much as us Gen Xers.
Well, I don't know.
But I think in the future, I mean, absolutely, we should have that input in some of the future developments, I mean, I know that we're. Branching out to the north, you know, and some of those are some higher buck homes and stuff like that, so maybe that makes sense to have some little bit larger lots. And.
It may not sell.
Yeah, you know, and when we, when we approve. The planning commission and the village board approved planned unit developments. You know, that's where the normal zoning lot sizes and stuff kind of gets set aside and. It can be, it's approved as a planned unit, you know, so sizes can vary. You know, so that, in when a planning development, yeah, we need to look carefully, more carefully at it. You know, and we have a lot of discretion when it's a planned unit development. So. That would be my comments, I'm saying we make changes to Pine Vale now, I'm just saying. When we do approve that. Certainly, I apologize, Wine Sap, when we do make future P U Ds approvals, that is something that, you know, we need to be aware of and.
P U D's approvals, that is something that, you know, we need to be aware of and board members can speak their, their concerns.
And, and the time to do that is at the preliminary plans, not the final plan stage. Well, we've already approved it on the preliminary plan, as in for statute, basically, unless something's changed, you have to approve it in the final plan.
Yeah, we're.
Just, 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 so the point of order, I'm just, I'm not asking for, I'm just having the discussion. I, I, I'm, i- if it was already approved. I just was asking that, that when I looked at that, um, thirty eight homes, I think it's thirty eight homes that are in there. Is that, uh, my question really kind of fell is, wow, there's some really small, small uh, lot sizes in there, in my opinion, but if the board is fine with it, then, then we can move on. I just asking that question of, is that what we want our community to look like? That's all.
I'll make a motion to approve wine sap, wine sap very first edition replay.
Contingent on the development.
Contingence on development agreement. Thank you, Kelly. Second. Motion by Chrome, second by Garn, to approve wine sap. Prairie first edition replat contingent on execution of developers agreement.
Further discussion is, do we, are, are we um, doing anything with those retaining ponds in this uh, motion or, or uh, is that some, because it's been on the punch list for some time?
Well, are you talking about the existing or the proposed?
Sorry?
There, there's a.
There's, there's.
The one that's built.
There is a future one that needs to be addressed in the next phase, if I recall the discussion.
Yeah, they're correct. In, in this, in this uh, addition, you know, there's, there's some, a re, a small retaining around retaining wall around wetland ten. And the majority of it is like, you know, someone three feet tall. There, and it, you know, it's, it's around a wetland and then.
I believe there was a sinkhole in one of the, one of the lots, and we had an email on that that was forwarded to Bob. From one of the landlords.
But that's not part of this addition.
That's what I was asking. So, if that's not part of that addition, then it's, then that was all I need clarification.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But do they have to fix that?
Yes.
In this addition before they can do the second?
So it's on, on on their punch list to do. He's been trying to get out there.
Yes.
With the rain coming, he keeps, he just, so for him to start anything with the, the first edition, he needs to satisfy the, the uh, punch list.
Right, which is the pond.
Which is the ponds, yep, and there's a, uh, I think some slight grading, yeah, so.
But we're just actually trying, they're the new pro, essentially a project manager for, for the developer. Uh, I met, met him at the planning commission, um.
He is online too, I believe.
He's on, you want?
So.
Want to talk?
Can we just give? Ask John if he wants to speak, what, I think we're in your comment still, can you? Can you speak and comment?
We're in your discussion.
Yeah, discussion, so I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow John to speak if, if he wants to make a comment. If he doesn't, we'll move forward with the vote. Good? Oh, he's on mute. Looks good.
He must be coming.
He has anything to say, so he's on his computer and. Yeah, sometimes you have to call him if you have poor signal.
Right.
Well, we'll proceed that with, uh, without John uh, making comments. Any other discussion points on? Six C one. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say nay. Motion passes unanimously, unanimously.
Excuse me.
Donnie, you're unmuted.
Um, six C two Pineville second edition final plans.
I'll make a motion to approve Pineville second edition final flat contingent developers agreement and um, a re accounting for the funds discussion. The uh, uh, planning commission with a recommendation to the board.
Frank, I'm saying. I'm just making note of your motion, so. Any discussion before we vote on the Pineville second final platter, the developer is here or the uh, is here. Let him speak and, and I'll go through the, any comments from the board, so.
Absent of um, seeing that in right in front, I just had, I did watch a little bit of the planning commission. There was some um, uh, cul-de-sacs. Uh, I'm assuming that were put at the end of these roads, right, so that we could have an issue, uh, because uh, it was brought up with the, the first edition about not having cul-de-sacs at the end of these roads, so you could get power trucks and, and fire trucks turned around?
Correct, oh, but Matt, you want to speak to it or Chuck, or Bob speak to it? Matt from Capstone.
Thank you, uh, it was a board, Matt Barker, Capstone, one four one five Sunfish Lake Boulevard in Ramsey. Um, just a question on the motion, I guess I would, was wondering a little bit of clarification about the pond issue you mentioned, mentioned in the motion. I wanted to see if I could understand, heard that brought up in the past. I wanted to make sure I understood the commission that, that was spoken there.
Yep, we're sending it back to planning commission to investigate, make a recommendation to the board.
Well, what would be usually?
I think it's about where wine is at.
No, he said Pineville.
I know.
But the whole discussion was around Pineville, wasn't it, Dave?
No, it was wine sap.
Dave, Dave. My discussion was on wine sap. Down particularly in, in the retaining walls, specs for building a wall.
Yeah.
And um, who's gonna have a worship?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, I'll amend my motion.
I'll second the amended motion. Alright, thank you.
Thank you though, yeah, as I said to the planning commission, we've been, uh, it's been an honor to build out here. We're really excited about um, the progress and the things that have been happening. Pineville has been coming along really well. We are looking forward to also uh, being back in Wine Sap Prairie and building there again. Uh, with John at the helm, taking the leadership on, on getting that. John is a highly skilled developer and, and uh, he's doing a great job trying to get this thing turned around. We're looking forward to being back down there, building some more homes again, so.
And you committed, are you, sorry, you're, you're committed to building all those homes in the wine set?
So we have, we have uh, an agreement to build uh, the two cul-de-sacs and get started there. Um, which is, I think, one of the areas where you were talking about the retaining wall and some of those others, so. Uh, but yes, we have, we have a commitment to John to be down there, be in the builder for, for that cul-de-sac section. Uh, we hope to continue beyond that as well, so.
I hear that.
Absolutely, thank you though, I would just speak, thank you for everything. It's been a success up there. We're getting close to forty homes built in Pineville. Um, just this year and our anticipation is that progress will continue into the year and the, and the year after that as well. We're already into this first edition that you approved last year. Um, we just broke ground on the first, I believe, five homes there. And those will be going uh, through the next two months and um, we've already got quite a bit of interest to be up there. That top of the hill that we got to this year is a really exciting place to be and some nice viewpoints into the fallings. So, um, so thank you, you guys, partnership is very important to us and uh, it's been, it's been great to share.
I have a question for you. Do, how many more homes do you expect to start? This year before you shut down for winter operations or do you, are you planning to shut down for winter operations?
Great question. Capstone doesn't stop. Um, we, we actually um, are full steam ahead. Right now, we're building a, a large number of foundations that we can build homes on during the winter time. So we do what's called a winter build program where we're putting foundations in the dirt before the frost gets heavy. So that when we get to the winter mode, our guys can continue to work. And it's a, it's a big part of our program. That's what gets us great contractors to work with us, because they know they've got year-round work. And we're able to keep our, our HVAC guys or plumbing or electricians or framers, everybody busy all the way through the year. So we'll continue to be building uh, probably at a pace of three to four homes a month, all the way through the winter time into next year. So that's why I say I anticipate this year, we've finished close to forty already. Um, we'll probably be right around the same ballpark next year and in the years to come, as long as the market continues to give us the opportunity to do that.
Reason why I says too bold to find out what your plans were, were in, understanding them and at finance reviewed, uh, billing permits and uh, impact fees, and we're trying to estimate how much, how much more would be coming in for the remainder of twenty twenty-five, so we want to be forty-three.
Yeah, okay, where are you at right now?
We are at thirty-six, so.
Yeah, well, hopefully we can help you get where you need to go there, so.
Well, there's only other, one other name on there. We're, we're depending on you.
Yep, that's great.
It's just, we just.
The question was, uh, uh, on the, on the end of these streets up here.
Yes.
Uh, uh.
Can you please address that for Donnie? Uh, I'm gonna grab my construction class real quick, because I believe we talked about that a little bit in plans.
As I recall, Donnie, I made a comment in my engineer review memo to add a, a turnaround at the, the end of a was it Foxtail? Uh, because, yeah, the, the city will want that because there's a trail at the end of it that also serves as a maintenance access, a- access.
I thought that on the first, on the first edition though, there's a couple of those that just kind of dead end up on, on that. Uh, and is there cul-de-sacs going to be put in there? Or are we just gonna leave them as dead ends because they don't, there's no trails up there? And how's a, how's a school bus or, or uh, or a fire truck gonna make a turnaround if there's no cul-de-sac?
First edition actually has temporary cul-de-sac shown on first edition at the end of Willow Glen Avenue. So um, that's a little tricky there, um, just because the likelihood of that ever going anywhere is a question, but um, in this phase that you're questioning about tonight, um, you have the vehicle maintenance access at the end of Stone Ridge Road. So there's room there and then we have the cul-de-sac shown on Foxtail Avenue. I think we were talking about some alternatives to how that can fit. That was in your comments.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, there will be, there are, and uh, we'll continue to pay close attention to that. To visit, I mean, some of the stuff, we're talking about another addition to the north. Um, uh, you know, with, or you guys are working on that. There's other things coming there, the stuff to the east is I don't know, that's a long ways out, so we want to make sure there's a way for you to turn your equipment around, so that's, that's accounted for. Garbage trucks, snowplows, emergency services.
Any other questions for Matt or, or for from the board?
What's the amended motion now?
The amended motion, as I have it, is to approve Pineville second edition final plant contingents on execution of developers agreement. With the motion by Garn, second by Chrome. Any other discussion?
Isn't the developer, it's been already been executed?
Please say that again, Donnie, I could not hear you.
The developers agreement for Pineville second edition is uh, is in further, okay, so that's other E seventy, okay.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it's, it's, you're approving the flat contingent on that being executed and signed. Um, uh, yeah, so they're, they're, they're tied together, they're married together to, um, so. Anything else? All those in here say aye?
Aye.
Both say no? Motion carries unanimously. Next item that was pulled up was six F one employee handbook. I will try to summarize what was discussed for the board members that were not present at, um. At uh, in, so it's in here, it is in the, the complete village board packet that was emailed out this afternoon. Um, there's the memo from Andrea, which states, uh, the, when we updated the handbook in July. Um, which required state and federal law changes. Uh, Jay Connor was working from a previous handbook, so some old language was approved in that, so um, what is being presented tonight is, um, the updated the additions and the, and the correct current other language. And also proposed was um, updating the leave of absence on page eighteen.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, could you, could you please tell me when?
Uh, Diane, just let me finish summarizing and I'll turn it over to you.
I understand your summary, I'm trying to find the email you, you just mentioned in there, that's all I want clarification.
Yep. While you, while you find it, I'll just read off uh, page sixteen, the compensatory time for exempt employees. Holidays on page fourteen and vacation time on page fourteen.
That email was sent at what time?
I think it was two forty-five, right, right? Okay, I didn't hear you, but I think it was like two forty something.
Is it necessary that we approve this today or can we table this until next week, next month and review this stuff? And bring it forward under maybe consent agenda, because I'd be willing to move, we don't have anything coming up on this. I'd like to at least have a chance to review this stuff. I don't like getting.
Motion to table.
Randy, I'm second.
Aye, motion to table by Garn, second by Chrome, all those in here say aye.
Aye.
Both, both say nay. Aye, motion to table, as you asked, six F two village holiday hours.
Move the table.
Motion by Donnie, second by
Second.
By Chrome to table six F two the next month for further review. All of the fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, everyone. We are now on to new business.
Fire and rescue report.
That made it through.
That made it through, the one that.
Just barely, it's seven A, discussion possible, group also sanitation, temporary storage area for containers. Let me introduce it a little bit, um. Trying to go all electronic, um, it's not working all the way. There with me, I apologize. Um, at the planning commission, we had um, also sanitation, yep, that's what I was looking for. In your packets, there is a map with uh, two red boxes on it, um, indicating where storage for, um, the roll-off containers would, um, would be stored. And I guess I'll turn it over to Olson sanitation to kind of explain what um, you're asking for. So, if you mind me sharing up?
Harry with Olson sanitation, um, we had reached out to Bob a month or so ago, just looking for, uh, we built our new transportation nets up and going. Uh, but we realized that we need more space. We need a little bit more room for storing of our roll-offs when they're not out on a customer job. So, um, during construction, we had utilized the utility road and it, it seemed to work, you know, fairly well for us and I had reached out to Bob and asked him if he knew of any property or any, any place where we could park our dumpsters in the temporary. Um, and he suggested a few options and one of them was this utility road and so we were just um, at the planning commission asking, you know, if we could utilize that to park some of our roll-off dumpsters as they aren't out, if we're out of the, of space for the time being.
So on the road or where the red boxes are?
Where the red boxes is.
Totally agree, I'm just one of the red boxes in the planning commission.
One to the north.
Yes, the one to the north.
I thought it was just the one.
Yep.
Are, are they gonna roll down?
No, they're big, they're big, they're like thirty feet, they're big.
Okay, so we want to put them down there, stay there.
Yep, yep, they're ten, twenty and thirty yards, so there are big dumpsters. They're not the smaller ones like you have out here at the village, they're the bigger ones that we would store there.
So the planning commission recommendation was to allow, um, them to store uh, containers in that northern area on the map, uh, shaded in red. Um, with uh, the conditions of, it, it, it's properly maintained in terms of mowing grass, you know, upkeep, any restoration that needed when they're removed.
And we revisit it.
They'll lead a scene and it's, what's that?
They'll lead a conditional use.
Yes, CPU and a reviving.
So the purpose of why it's here tonight is, is the village board willing to allow? The Olson sanitation to use this for temporary storage because it's on village property, oh one is temporary, I guess, may I have the question?
We are, it it is in our plans to buy more land, uh we're just not at that point now, so I think it was discussed to. Uh for a year with the ability to, i- if we need to move the dumpsters, we can get them moved within a half a day. So they can be moved, you know, if necessary for utilities or any work, but otherwise to revisit it after a year and hopefully, you know, by that point, we have. Additional spot where we can park them or in the works of planning something more than.
So before the planning commission went ahead and developed the conditional use permit, they wanted to know that the village board was okay with. Um using this land for this purpose and um.
So based on that, we just like charging them a buck or something? It's up to you. Sounds good.
For the whole year, a month, a day?
And Bob, you have no problem with this being close to the uh lift station?
It's away from the lift station and inside of the gradient ground, so it's, there's a lot of topography up in that area, so it isn't a good spot. Uh part of the best spot in that area, so.
Would there be any liability to us if anybody got hurt or injured on that?
We would address that in the CUP, Donnie.
Um, we need a.
The village attorney, just so everyone here is recommending along with the CUP, uh do a lease agreement. We should spell those other liability con- conditions, so. Bill Garn make a motion to approve. Motion by. Uh conditional uh on the uh CUPD and or lease agreement um. So basically, you're what you're saying is further recommendation back to the board? Yeah, okay. Any discussion?
I have, I have discussion, I just want to say, uh I love being able to work with you guys and partner on this, your building's beautiful out there. And I think it's a really good example of us being able to partner with a small local business and kind of work together.
Yes, thank you, we appreciate you guys who scored backing in all our projects too, so.
You've been a, we're we're talking after meeting, you've been part of the village for over three decades. Probably four, so I'm a great partnership that's riding, so. Um, any other discussion, all those appear to say aye?
Aye.
Post say no? Motion passively unanimously, six, seven, being approved. Discussion possible approval or ten five list station and utility extension chain order number four.
The president, this this changer doesn't have any dollars untied to it. It's to extend the, you know, currently the substantial completion that it has passed, that was August twenty ninth. With a final completion date of October first, which is coming up shortly. Um due to delays resulting from, you know, that uh. That pipe verification, you know, that the pipe underneath this, yeah, the DOT highway. Of the delays that resulted in other delays namely. XL's ability to get run power and generate the list station, so that's really.
Reaction of delays.
So really, that's kind of why um they've asked to extend the substantial to November twenty sixth. And in the final to June first and, you know, essentially what that means is. Substantial is an operating uh list station facility and then, you know, the, due to the lateness of the year. You know, the final punch list and the cleanup and turf frustration and some of those things. All right, we anticipate, you know, they'll they'll need to be addressed next spring. Um so this, this works with the uh, you know, there there's that limitations with. The the current development that's at forty-five and that doesn't pose any issues in that regard.
And if we had to run the lift station for something, Bob pointed out that the generators there. If we.
Randy Chrome making a motion to approve ten five lift station utility extension change order number four.
Motion by Crown, second by Garn, any discussion?
Yes, discussion, uh there's no, there's no numbers at all on this one?
Nope, no, it's just an extension of of the deadlines. Any other discussion?
Is that gonna, is that gonna uh get us into any trouble with uh our obligations on our end?
No.
With the agreements that we have of getting uh, you know, connections out into that other other area?
Hmm, Bob is indicating no. Any other discussion? Always a call for the vote, all of the people say aye? Post say no? Motion pass to the ass. I'm just gonna see who's here for, are you here for a specific item or just to enjoy the wonderful?
Enjoying this.
Okay.
He's here for a specific item, I know.
Uh then I would go to uh, if we can move to um. Was looking for uh seventeen um direct. If we can move down to seventy, uh discussion of possible group of draft developers agreement for Pine Vale Second Edition.
Well, yeah, Bob and I and Matt have worked on this and I. I think it's in final form, all the exhibits and information that was requested. I've been missing you, and I personally haven't renewed the plans, I left that to. Uh the engineers and and Bob and that have looked at. But the language of the development agreement itself, you think is done. Thank you, it's a couple of little comments this morning and those are included, so I, I think it's it's ready to go from my perspective.
Any other points? Bob, Doc? Matt, any, you wanna bring up?
The developer's agreement is duplicate of the previous years, so it's something different other than the number of lots and the dollars and the addition phasing, so. Uh we're, we're, we're good with that, it is, thank you.
Uh Randy Chrome making a motion to approve the draft developers agreement for Pine Vale Second Edition.
Second. Motion by Crown, second by Garn, sorry. Any discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, go ahead, Donnie.
Just for Bob, Bob, you've you've taken a look at everything on this, uh everything seems to flow uh with uh um. What was approved with the original um development in that area?
Asking if it's the same as it was last time, I think.
Yeah, yeah, he's saying yes. The developer treatment is essentially an exact copy of the previous one, just with changing of the lots. And legal descriptions.
The original had multiple, you know, lots, it was like one, two and and three, and that's why we're on the second, second edition. And I'm just asking if nothing's changed from the original plots that were provided uh from us to to the board. Uh in the original um. Original uh documents.
This is the supplement for the original one.
But the, but the actual lots and everything still remain the same, right?
Right.
Okay.
Village Attorney is indicating uh correct.
And once the final plaque gets recorded, so we have a document number, then this agreement will be recorded as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Uh always have a motion, Donnie?
Both to approve the develop, oh, the motion.
Oh, yeah, we already have a motion and second, so um I'll call for the vote, all of the people say aye?
Aye.
Post say nay? Motion carry unanimously. Alright, we'll go back up to seven C, task order Newman Farms green space plan.
So this task order is for uh thirty thousand dollars, thirty thousand seven hundred dollars. And essentially what it is is, you know, there's a. Uh potential for a two hundred and fifty acre multi-use development just north of Pine Vale. On the very north uh, you know, just just north of the village limits. And, you know, because it's multi-use, you know, you know, with commercial industrial or residential um. Staff feels that it's important to, you know, really kind of visit and and make sure that there's a. Uh adequate buffer and uh green space and and parking wreck opportunities. Uh for that portion of town, and and so this this green space would kind of help provide that transition from commercial industrial. To uh to the residential and then provide, you know, uh additional amenities. And uh, you know, what's currently being contemplated is new ball fields. And pickleball courts, basketball facility, all-inclusive uh play area, you don't have any of those in town currently. Uh and uh and I just, you know, green space for future athletic. Uh fields and and what, and and then there's also stormwater management too that could occur in these green spaces. And so if you look at the the very back of this thing, there was a quick exhibit created. That just kind of blocked out an area and, you know, threw a couple of amenities on there, um you know, but is that enough green space? There's, there's areas kind of that, to the north of that, that could also be, probably should be revisited for buffer, buffer. Between the commercial and the industrial, so this is really just kind of taking a deeper dive. Figuring out what should go there, how much acreage is appropriate for this area.
Are we just talking the thirty thousand for the green area?
Yeah, essentially the green area, plus you see that there's there's that stage area or V above that too. So it'd be, that's the kind of the two areas, and just refining and identifying how that's gonna fit in there.
Yeah, I think we really haven't been looking at our green spaces, I mean, we've looked at them, we've um checked the boxes. But I think on this next addition uh that we're putting in, the next tid, we really have an opportunity to do right by um. All villagers and put a great park in there, and we need more fields um. So I know this is a, this is quite a bit of money, but I think in order for us to do this right. I think this plan, uh we need to follow up with this plan and get this, get this set in place, so when the time comes, we'll be ready to be off and running. Um it was unanimously unanimously approved by the public works board um. So yeah, I'm I'm excited about it.
Is this uh, is this gonna come out of the tin?
No, it's gonna come out of parkland dedication fees that have been paid by um developer. So that those proceeds will go towards this.
Well, it, the the tid right now is not generating enough enough income, so. Well, there is the, yeah, correct, so that is not in a tid yet, so.
Right, but but we were gonna be extending the tid up that way, are we going to, is that, are we forming a new tid there?
Potentially.
Maybe determine.
Yeah, potentially, it's a possibility if we execute the purchase.
Yes, so.
Okay, so we don't, we don't actually own the land here, we're we're, we're gonna re-figure this uh on the on the premise that we got? That we're gonna own the land?
Well, we're trying to determine if the land that we possibly could purchase means our needs for the, for the parkland. Um, you know, that we want and need to fill some deficits of of uses that we don't have. That's my interpretation interpretation of what needs to, it needs to happen here.
So essentially, the development would be. Designed around the green space, and that's what really is uh holding some design features up. Um just because the the buffer is very critical to residential and um. You know, in the village and and also on the town, so that's the areas that we really need to take a look at. And there is no recreation in Pine Vale, just because the topography, we're left with basically big holes in the ground. Um so that was the idea carrying forward with Pine Vale was to put a pretty expansive uh recreation area. Uh in this future phase here.
You know, I just think it, uh my personal opinion too is, you know, you figure this stuff out, it just helps kind of the sustainability and moving. All these items forward because you know, you've identified what what is needed there and what's going to be there. You can help articulate that to potential future partners, you know, them.
And then you will give us the Cadillac plan, the GMC plan and the Cambe.
Well, give it to, see, take question.
Any other question, any other questions or? Um, it's good, I think I believe we have a motion in a second. Give further discussion, was there a motion in a second?
Randy Chrome making a motion to approve. The draft of a, oh, whoa, whoa.
Task order.
Move the.
Task order, six, six C.
Oh, six C, task order for Newman Farms Green Space Plan.
One second.
Motion by Crown, second by Dubek. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I'm gonna call for the vote, all those in Paris say aye?
Aye.
Post say nay?
Nay.
Most pass unanimously.
I was a nay.
Oh, oh, okay, I, I did not hear you, thank you for clarifying that, um so the vote was six one. Um the next item in your packet. Um. Really has no longer need for discussion, uh there was going to be a planned concert. Um that was uh well, essentially this weekend. Um but uh they worked out the details of where it was originally supposed to be held, so.
Was it Farm Aid?
Farm Aid, yeah, so. Dang, so um no action is needed on.
That's gonna come back.
Seven D's, we'll move on to seven F, branding project update. And turn it over to Jessica.
Yep, there's a one slide in there, I I did one slide, cause that's all you guys wanted, and these are just some of the concepts we're working through. We took what Becca took and we're trying to uh simplify it a little bit more.
Thank you, Matt.
Thanks, guys.
Um, these are by no near finalists, this is open for you guys to say right now, yay or nay? If you'd like us to change direction, uh like I'm having my professional graphic designers work on these, but um.
I, I, Jessica, I've discussed it before the meeting and um except for the three. You know, she have the lower left hand corner, uh I think they're great examples of what it could be.
You don't like the three?
Well.
Favorite three?
No.
We're our favorite, so, but that's.
Well, I'm not saying what, what I'm saying for our our standard logo. You know, yeah, the the.
Whatever you guys want.
For, you know, for what's on the digital, what's on the letterhead.
Yep.
But I'm not saying that we don't have secondary like there was in the original presentation. Uh I think those need to be tweaked a little bit further.
I think it all needs to be a little more tweaked, but we're almost there, so, but if you want to change the color palette, if you want it to be less.
The only comment Jessica and I had is ultimately at the end of the day, when we have um. The files, the digital files, we need, we need a monochrome version. So it's one that's black and white.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Pretty, pretty scaled, because sometimes when you print certain things.
Yep.
Putting the color one in black and white.
Digital designers work on here.
Yeah, so we need um.
And none of the taglines are final at all, I think that my uh graphic designers who have looked at this liked the sun in these. Uh but.
So what does it say on the second one in the middle there, where?
Does, the line doesn't matter, the line is not, there there's no words that will be approved today. There's no tagline that will be approved, there's no nothing.
It's just like, it's kind of showing what.
What it could be.
What tagline, where where it would be placed.
Yep, there's no taglines to be approved, this is just um. Uh a visual representation and we liked the ones with the sun in it, but if you guys like the ones without the sun, that is fine. Um no tagline is approved, we will work on that next, right?
So so for these, so for these signs here, we would use bold signs or we got?
No, those are just examples of whatever we might wanna do.
But with the color scheme?
Those those are the color scheme. If you don't like the color scheme, we can change it. But yeah, that's the color scheme I go with. I can get you all the hex color.
No, I'm I'm good. I I like the color scheme. I'm good with either one of those colored signs.
Okay.
Um. So, yeah.
It was just, do we have the sun in there or not? That was.
Yes.
Same.
Yes, I say I say yes.
That's why I like those two, but they've removed it.
So technically you gave us two.
Well, I I gave you two. I gave you one with the sun and one without the sun, yes.
I don't like the welcome home with the S because that I feel like you're knocking off the century.
Well, the S represents Somerset and it's the Apple River.
It is, but I mean, it that looks just like the century symbol.
Oh, yes, okay, that's fine.
Comic book. Or we don't want to rip that off.
I love the one with the sun and.
So you can come in a square version or a round version. The tagline is not what we're approving today.
I like the square version.
I like the round version.
Oh, gee.
Those are my two favorites and they were moved down from it.
From uh. From um. Use on paper and on digitally.
A graphic designer is working on that, yes.
The round one would be better.
Yes, the square one should be.
I'm not saying that, but the square one can still be used in alternative.
Yep.
Um things, so I'm not saying it doesn't have its purpose, but um. The round, the round one is more representative of my being.
Sure.
Okay, we're not doing down the psychological. Um I think you're you're on the right start. Um you know, just uh when on those two. The square one or the or the, you know, I I still think the village needs to be worked in there somewhere.
Oh, you want the word village?
Yeah, I just think it should be.
It's, none of this is final.
No, 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 I. Throw a sun in there.
Yeah, the round one goes right there.
Yeah, yeah, so um cause that's just if you can. Uh bring back your final recommendations for next month and hopefully we can finally approve this.
But is this?
You're headed in the right direction.
Yeah, great job. Donny, go ahead. Donny.
I didn't, I didn't hear anything from Chris or Chris on that. I heard from Brandon and and uh.
I like it.
Brandon, Chris says yes, Chris says yes.
Okay.
High track, yeah. And and we just took what Becca had and just took it a little bit further, but she had a little too many layers and too light colors, but. It's.
Good, good job.
What was Johnny?
Good job.
Yeah, she got us, I mean, thinking out of the box.
Yeah.
And now we're refining it, so I think uh it's great.
Thank you very hard.
So, again, my request is uh of the internal committee to uh. Bring the final recommendation next month, so we so the public works committee can start going ahead with. Pricing out signage, getting that figured to the champions to help us uh fund that program, so.
We got that in our budget already.
The way finding signs.
Way finding signs.
No.
No.
No, but champions and other group are hoping to help us on that, so.
A little passionate on the price of wayfinding.
Oh.
My eye is gonna bug out.
Yeah, we may only get to order two a year.
Yeah.
Maybe.
We'll worry, budget is the next step.
Budget season's coming up.
Yeah, so, alright, great job. We will move on now to.
Uh we get the final one. I'll make a motion to get the final one done by the next meeting.
Motion by Plur, second by Crowe. All in favor?
Aye.
Most say the same. Motion passed unanimously. Discussion only, one eightieth parent street update. Um. About a month ago, um when the um. Construction signs went up, um I was contacted virtually by every township supervisor. Um. Complaining what we were doing. Um I replied back to him in a polite email with a copy of the jurisdictional transfer that was executed in January of this year. Showing that we had full authority to do what we were doing. Um I did not hear anything else per week except from um. The town chairman Doug Plur on how we um resolve the. Land transfer underneath. Bob, you had a response to the the department administration saying. A full transfer of the land underneath for the whole part of the township can't be done because it creates a town island, correct, correct? So um. Doug has suggested that we um. That a transfer of almost all the road, but leave a strip. Essentially by letting Jermaine's property, just leave a small strip of parcel connecting. And see if that would be an approval um that the state would approve. So that's where I'm just providing an update. Um. I just felt the board should know what the what what uh I had.
It's requiring to be big guys?
They own the village, all village, I don't know, but it's not used as a. Um. It's a village parcel, but it's owned by them, whereas this would cut off. When houses that are in the township, which would create a town island, which can't be done.
So I I have a question on that because uh Plur drive. Was a village road, turned over to the village, embedded village road, but there's township residents that live down at the end of that road. And there's a driveway that goes off a village road onto the into those residents. So I said, I don't understand how it can be done in that in that situation. I mean, all we're really talking about here is the transfer for state aid. And what I was told from uh. I was getting conflicting stories because Jerry said that we should be able to do it as long as we had it surveyed and they they actually had a meeting. And did a class, class one notice and and were rightfully and able to transfer, uh you know, and turn. Tr- transfer it over to us for state aid purposes only. And now it's being told that you can't do it because it creates an island, which they have already done in a a different part of our village.
Well, that, I don't, where you're talking on um. Those houses. On the backside of their property is still connected to the township, so that can create a town island.
No, they're not connected to the township.
Dot and pause and repeat that.
When you. When you annex the right away is what the department administration said it creates the issue is you don't have any frontage now. On a town, so the town hall front state highway, so it's not village. And what he was saying is if you annex, then essentially they're gonna lose um town. That town services is really what I think the the biggest um concern is, and that's why they don't want to create the island. Yeah, I think if you look at the zoning map, right, you you can see how the town hall sits up there and then across. Across the highway is more town land and then it connects down across there. If you take a big swath of parents tree, you're cutting off that whole. Part above when, you know, that uh north of uh parents there.
And you can make a deal with the town for maintenance cars.
Yeah.
We we've done essentially that, well, not for maintenance cars, I mean, meaning we have a jurisdictional transfer, which allows us to perform maintenance, reconstruction, all that.
But you know, for that section, you can get the same practical effect. To reimburse for the state aid that the town gets, because you're gonna perform services.
But if it was a village road, we would get considerably more state aid.
Or or the agreement could be what is.
On what you've negotiated, I guess.
We would negotiate, couldn't just negotiate that whatever the township gets for aid on that portion, they they give her over to us. So I just wanna give an update. Well, it will be on the next joint meeting, but I just felt.
The I guess the the bigger thing that I that I I that I I've been hearing is. You know, we might have the right to do all of the things that we need to do. Uh with regards to that road in that intergovernmental agreement that was uh agreed to by the the uh township. However, the township does still have ordinances and and they're saying that the driveways and everything. How how does that fall in the line, I guess, with whose ordinances cover what if the town still owns the road and even though they gave us the right? To do it, is that intergovernmental agreement trump their ordinances? That's a question for Paul.
Well, if it. If the village has jurisdiction. Then the village would have the driveway permits, but if it's a town road. You know, then the town would control.
Regardless of their ownership.
The town road, the town road, the town roads, they have a certain distance between their driveways. And we're putting them a lot closer than that and 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 our proposal is already done. We're a lot closer in our driveways. Uh than what what's already allowed by town specs.
Which is why. Donny, that that in tid five is 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 your. Essentially, you're, you know, it's it was annexed to the center line of the road. And so the south part of that road adjacent to the village property is under falls under your jurisdiction.
So where we're entering in tid five, the south side, technically our road falls under our.
That part is ours.
It's the other half of it that is in dispute. Yeah.
So we're gonna leave a one foot nine strip of basketball?
Possibly, or we figure out some other arrangement. They they wanna find a resolution to it, so um.
It'll be on discussion. Right meeting.
Correct.
I guess I just don't see the benefit of, you know, some sort of spite strip or whatever to to do that.
The the Doug wants to just be done with it, get this issue done. And you know, that's his desire, so.
It's done.
I think I can do that by agreement without having to.
So. Another.
Again, so I just was trying to update you that, you know, um. That, you know, the. They push. Really hard when if when the construction sides went up and um.
Do we know when that? When that road closure, do we know when the road closure is gonna end?
Uh end of this month. Yeah, they're paving some sometime this month they'll pave this way.
Alright, uh moving on to seven H. Police staffing in twenty twenty six. Uh this has been reviewed at the public safety committee and the finance and personnel. Uh we just want to uh. Plant the seed tonight with the full village board. Joel's still back there?
He's on the Zoom call.
Oh, he's on the Zoom. We switch over to him and uh ask him to.
Yeah, guys, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep, thank you, Joel. If you just wanna uh highlight your your memo. Um and why there's urgency to uh have us take it up. Be over the next couple of months.
Sure, yeah, we have an officer who is uh getting deployed and will be on military leave starting in December. It's gonna be about a twelve-month. Vacancy that's gonna be created. Um. I mean, if you go back and watch some previous meetings from the public safety committee, I've been kind of uh planting the seed, I if you will, for. Um kind of growing our staff up to um industry uh benchmark standards. Um you you know, in the in the handout, I I I referenced the FBI UCR staffing averages for agencies. Serving populations of twenty-five-hundred to ten-thousand residents, and they call for a two-point-four officers per one hundred or one thousand. Uh population. Um with that benchmark, that would put us right at eight-point-four officers. Um if. We got a recent update from the department administration recently that put us just shy of thirty-five-hundred people. Um. So just real briefly, historically, um from nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-eight, uh Somerset had. Three full-time officers. From nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and one, uh we had five full-time officers, which also included. A um SRO position, which was fifty percent funded by the school, and prior to that, it was introduced by a grant. Um but from that same time period, from like two thousand to two thousand and twenty, that twenty-year period. Our population um rose ninety-six percent. Oh, you got something there, Ryan?
No, no, Chuck has just taken off, so I was telling him, thank you.
Oh, I see, okay. So um you know, we had that almost uh one hundred percent increase in population from the year two thousand to two thousand and one with no additional officers. Um I took over as chief in twenty twenty. Um in twenty twenty-one, we essentially took budget. A line item from the part-time budget and converted that into a full-time officer position. Um in twenty twenty-two, um we had a vacancy in our um office coordinator position, a civilian position. We took that line item and essentially converted that to a full-time officer position. It wasn't a one-for-one match in either of those, but we were using existing budget to. Kind of grow our um staff to better align with this benchmark, which um. We can feel, um we we certainly um. I would say um are in the need for this eighth position. Um. And then also, like, if you look at projections um for our community, it's it's certainly growing. Um. We have that SRO position back in place. That's a full-time position now. That takes one of our our road cars out of our uh our rotation. So we got the military leave coming up. We've had a a plethora of different types of um FMLA. Uh people having kids, people getting married, uh different vacations. Um so we're just, we're kind of scrambling to um. Kind of do it with our current staff, let alone a twelve-month vacancy. And while I'm on the topic, it takes, it takes, it could take up to um eighteen months to onboard a new officer, which doesn't really help our situation. But Baldwin PD um just hired someone, had to put him through an academy. Once they get out of the academy, which is about um five to six months, you gotta put them on a three-to-six-month FTO um. Period, but that's not including the whole um posting, uh making a job posting, receiving applications. Uh going through two different panel interviews, doing the background investigation, and then finding uh the next academy to put these people through. So it's just, it's it's an uphill battle and I feel like even if we started to today, I'm not sure we could find a qualified candidate. Um there are agencies who are hiring up. Um so if there are a lot of eight positions, they might hire nine. Um just for the event that they have a vacancy, they recognize how long um the hiring processes. And they kind of have a a next person up kind of uh. Cool, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that with us, but um. It's kind of a brief background of where where we're at. I did give a presentation at the prior meeting. Um if you guys want a little bit more background. And then at the public safety, um if if you want to review some more statistics.
And then one thing we did discuss while we're at the finance meeting was the possibility for um. Ryan and Chief and um others to meet and possibly see if there was more funding that could be kicked in by the school. Potentially, um just because, you know, they have one SRO officer, a lot of other schools have, you know, an officer at every building potentially, so. Um that's something that the school would be willing to kick in and help cover some of that. I think we should definitely have a conversation.
Uh just to just to briefly set up, Dr. Graham and I have been getting together once a month since he started, so um. Uh we've established a good rapport already and he's very supportive of the SRO program, so um. It would be a natural discussion that we could bring up next, so.
Interesting.
So, thank you, right? All of credit organized that for Chris, myself and uh the chief to. Meet with him, so. Go ahead, Joel.
Uh that's about it. I I guess the only thing on the SRO, um you know, a lot of other municipalities get seventy-five percent reimbursement. Essentially, you're getting an officer for nine months out of the year. Um so that's. Something that we can we can look into, but uh again, I'm not sure, even if we posted it, I'm not sure. This would be a oh a solution for us in the end. This would be a oh, a solution for us in the interim. Um, obviously, it's it's more for onboarding someone. As soon as possible. Uh, there might be a possibility we get someone who's. Already been through an academy or is a lateral transfer coming from another agency. Um. But uh, you know, we're competing with Hudson, River Falls. Um, they're all paying ninety-plus thousand dollars, uh, much more than us. So it just. It's a, it's a competitive market. It's it's a difficult market for us to um. There there's been agencies that have been hiring for years and they have yet to be full staff, so. Um. Now seems like a good time, just because there's gonna be that vacancy all next year. Um. The the idea was to let the budgets uh fall, see where this would fit in, but obviously twenty twenty seven would have to be. Um, a a a big year um where we'd have all eight officers uh back on staff.
Reason why we wanted to have just a discussion tonight, just to make you aware of it, what's going on, plant the seed. So next month, the finance and personnel will take a bigger in-depth um the budget process to see if it can be done. So and if it can be done, um. We're bringing it forward to the board for authorization, so Joel could start to help fund it or fill it, both, you know. Do it the better, um. Uh, because it may take him some time to find a candidate. Um, so that's. The urgency here and why we're talking about it now versus next in January, so. Um, any other questions from the board?
Just one thing, what do I understand in twenty twenty six? We're gonna be from uh seven officers to six officers, right? Because of a a military leave. So we're actually down one officer at this at that point in time. And we'll need to increase at least to get back to our seven and then possibly extend that into twenty twenty seven. For uh twenty twenty seven's budget, right?
Yeah, yeah, Donnie, that is, that is the goal is to, you know, we'll we'll be able to use some of the funds from the. The officer that's on leave to fund it. But the goal would be then to um. Fully fund it as a separate position by twenty twenty seven. Any other questions? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. Good night, guys.
Yep, good night. Next item we have is discussion only twenty twenty six budget priorities. Um. Due to the length of the meeting, um. What I had planned to do is to allow us uh the board to um. Put some feedback in the front end of the budget process. Too often, what happens if committees um submit their budgets, the finance and personnel works on it. It gets to the full board. And it's all packaged together and it's kind of too late to make major tweaks to it. So what I was wanting to do is to get input from the board. Tonight on their, you know, top three. Or top five at the most, um, things that um. Uh, you would like to see funded, whether it be personnel projects. Oh, whatever. Um, so what I'm gonna ask you to instead of doing that tonight is that. You email those to Jessica. And copy them to me. By next Friday. This coming Friday, but by next Friday.
Is uh if if an email is gonna be given to Jessica, couldn't Jessica just forward it to all of the board members?
Well, once, once it's received, we will summarize those and if there are duplicates, we'll highlight that. It's been, you know, that it's got a higher priority because it's been submitted by. You know, multiple people, so that's why. I wanted it to be, you know, if if say some. Four people say they want more pickleball courts. You know, that'll be higher on the list.
How many priorities do you want, right?
Three to five, three, three to, no more than five.
Or even for for saving and for.
Total.
Three to five asks.
Everyone understand and so, um, if you could do that by next Friday, uh.
It really would be nice, though, to know who is asking for what in their priorities.
We'll be fully transparent on it, Donnie. Look, it's it's won't be a secret who submitted what. We will, we'll have that all. In the summary report, so um it's just that uh. The meeting's running long and this would take a substantial amount of time tonight, so uh um. Kind of taking it up to allow the meeting to go faster. So, thank you for everyone that will take your time to do that um. By next Friday. The next item is a discussion only on the St. Craig Housing Need Assessments. Um, in your packets, you should have the two-page. Um. Um, snap, this is just the snapshot of data of the four hundred and some page report. Um, that was released last Monday, um, that had been worked on for the past uh ten months or so. Uh, that was ordered by the St. Craig Economic Development Corporation. Um, we also uh participated in with some funding. Um, this is a, they ju- for all the communities that participated with additional funding, they generated these snapshot reports. There are more details in the full report and we'll get you the link on that. Um. Once it's uh been linked on the webpage, uh, we'll get that out to you. Um, we're looking to also um hold a joint meeting with the school district and the township. And use this as our going topic. Um.
A recording?
There's no, no, there's no presentation.
From what they did, okay.
Yeah, but um. We're, I'm trying to, I'm on the executive committee of the commission, so I'm using my influence to get the planner up here to.
Do one more presentation on it? I missed that thing, sorry.
Yeah, no, you had, yeah, you had, unfortunately. So um, there's one thing that that I just want to point out before we move on.
Take the planning mission in with those?
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, I I intend to get the plan. I think I've communicated that with the.
Thank you.
Yeah, um. Uh, one thing that uh. The chief pointed out this afternoon, when we look on the second page on the population pro- projections. The. The planner who wrote the report can only use. They don't generate the data, they use publicly available sources. Um, so i- this is population projections from the department administration. With twenty twenty four, which is really twenty twenty three data, which doesn't know about many of our. Addition uh construction since then, which would be pinevalve. And and those types of things. Um, so um, take that into consideration when you look at that. Um. That projection, it's more likely to see how. It's not going to to drop like it does, more like the regular angle, we keep going.
Forty-five.
Yeah, so. So I will, I'm I'm gonna ask Susan um to see if she could find additional data. Um, to give us a an updated snapshot with, given the fact that we. Have more growth than the department administration is aware of in twenty twenty four, which is really twenty twenty three data, so.
I have the same problem.
Yeah, more growth. Yeah. Next business. Are any questions? I um feel free to email Jessica and she'll relay them to me, so. Moving on. The unfinished business. Um, discussion and possible approval of alternate member to the board of zoning appeals and police review board. Um, I am appointing alternate member uh to the police review board. Um, Fred Mangine. Go ahead and. Make a motion.
Frank Chrome make a motion to approve all uh appointments for the alternate member to board of zoning.
No, it's the police review board.
Well, police re- only the police review board for Dino.
Fred Bajin.
Fred Mangine.
Don't know Fred, but sounds great. Any questions? Hey, any discussion questions? Always, I'll call for a vote. All those in here say aye. Post a name. Motion passes. Um, Board of Zoning Appeals. What's what happened? Look it up before. Right, the meeting, damn it, no, I forgot. Dave Wolber. I think we're already on the zoning appeals board. Oh, it uh. Believe it's King Puts. Uh, we'll come back to this. Uh, let's move to eight B, discussion of possible approval of draft. Developers agreement for Wyandotte Prairie first edition.
This one we tabled last month and I don't. Didn't get anything during the month for additional information. Well, there was, there was comments to it and the things we needed for the exhibits.
Yep. Okay. I think that was my failure to get the exhibits. I know the comments went out. What am I listening?
And maybe they did, I just. I was looking through and I didn't have enough to get it all together like pinevalve.
Is that gonna hold up anything up? No, we don't have that until like board meeting or. Might have to have a special meeting or?
Yeah, um. Will it, while they are anticipating, scheduling pipe to go in around in October sometime, so.
We have to have a special meeting then.
Well, in order for them to start, I mean, they can, well, what's missing, I mean, the legal language is there. Are we just missing exhibits? So we could approve it, intended upon the exhibits.
That was requested last month, was it not?
I don't know what was really requested last month. You just had tabled it. I think you thought it was premature and wanted to review it.
Well, I was tabled because we didn't actually have the plaque in front of us. And then there was a discussion about the the missing, you know, the items, because we were gonna put the developers agreement and there was no exhibits attached. And we said, well, we'd like to at least get the exhibits attached. And that's what I was saying is that is that uh, you know, we're we're approving a developers agreement. We don't have the plaque, we don't have the other exhibits, and I said, that's a little premature for that until we have all the stuff in front of us. Now, we did approve the, we we did approve the plaque here tonight. Is there any other things that are outstanding, Paul?
Well, basically, it's gonna be the project plans and specs. And the thought estimate.
I did send you the exhibits. Obviously, it's, it actually came from God.
Oh, okay, well, anyway, I mean, if if they've been approved. Then I think we can go ahead and approve this, because that was really the last step. Just to have those plans done. A lot going on. Yeah, then I'll, I'll package it up there. And it'll be all done.
Well, do we approve it tentatively on the attorney getting everything packaged up for us then, or what?
That's, we we can do that.
Make a, Frank Chrome make a motion to approve the draft developers agreement for Wyandotte Prairie. First edition contingent upon Paul putting together packet for us.
Exhibits.
Exhibits. Well, this.
They'll be sent to the board then upon getting them put together then, Paul?
Yeah, we will make sure the developers agreement is, once all the, the full packet is out, we'll get it distributed.
Yeah, and then it'll be signed and it'll be recorded once the final plan's recorded.
Is there anything outstanding with that that we were talking about here prior with them holding ponds, or is that, is that a different conversation?
We'll schedule a final walkthrough with M S A and review those. Punch list items. I do have a note with Chuck this evening that he'll review. The uh retaining walls that have been built and uh that are being built owned. As well as the ones around the wetland that are being proposed. Tony, uh, the building inspector, um, I have a note out to him as well. I did talk to him today about. Uh, the retaining walls at the property and that does follow the building inspector, so. Um, I'll let him know, take a look at those and see if there's any issues.
Sorry to interrupt you, but on the sink holes, is that what you're talking about? Uh, Tony something, Tony's gonna look at that? Or is that something that's uh just.
To determine what what actually is going on with that, but. I think when that sinkhole happened, there was a lot of mud from a lot of rain. Is what I'm understanding of that.
I know for a while, um, but yeah, because I was, I seen it last year and then it brought it up again this.
We have a first and a second?
Do we need to put a contingency on this, uh, on the the uh punch list being finished off on this first, too?
Well, the final walkthrough will, let's be, I do do have Chuck scheduling that, so um the. John did email me and let me know that they are completed with all their work up there. Uh. He said, we apologize, it couldn't end. Can you relay this to the board? Um, I can read you, but you sent me if you like.
What about the retained respond that was just brought up by uh one of the planning commission members?
Well, that is technically in the next phase, so we have time to. Get standards in place. The one issue is the retained walls, but we will um. Not sure how we're gonna have, we'll figure out that somehow, um.
Well, basically, I think we need to have a building spec.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah, um. How we have that enforced with what's already constructed and approved. Uh, so.
Being, being you had no, nothing in the blueprints that showed. The construction of the wall itself and then their elevation and basic layout. Um. So, like I said, the planning commission members that I talked to feel that we didn't have enough. Really approve the the development. Um, so there needs to be a spec that we need to generate. Because I don't think they have it. I think they're just. We stand for approval with contingency, then make them all to the table. And we need to hold a special meeting after the planning commission.
I mean, the retaining walls without the butter are on property. They they're not engineered because they don't need to be.
Yeah, I I know that.
But I do have M S A. I just said, we look at them on Bruce Davis, verify that one's okay. Um. And then the homeowners will have the building inspector because that is the building inspector. Tony, I'm sure has already looked at them and uh might get some, I know from him. On that piece, but. Davey, you're right, um, retaining walls, although they're to to do a spec. Sometimes it can be difficult because you've got your soils and all kinds of different things. So, yep.
So, so I'd like to see their reports and the modeling you did and how they came up to the design of their paint. Because that is the space that. Right, so I'd like to see that modeling, so then I can determine in line for you. You best to make sure our condition of our planning work.
I guess those are key, quick intentions, uh, be additional contingencies on the execution of the developers agreement that. The. The. Are there retaining walls in this phase?
Yes.
This, in this new phase? No.
Same phase we approved.
The original phase, there's, there's no retention, retaining walls under any of the harms areas. There's one call up on wetland in phase two, which is this is the first edition, the second edition. There is retaining wall to protect the wetland. And that.
So we have time to address it before approval. Right, well, I mean, it can be, even if there's errors in your work, the previous work, they can repair it.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't, well, I wouldn't try to hold the builder up.
Yeah, okay, I think we've clarified that, so. The motion is to approve the draft developers agreement for Wyandotte Prairie. Contingent on receiving all the exhibits and approval by the village attorney.
There's already a second.
Yep. Yep, so. Any other discussion? If not, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post a say no. Motion passes.
Let's do a drink.
Did Donnie say no?
Did Donnie, did you say no?
I did.
Okay, six, one, thank you, Donnie, it's something, it's hard to hear you on, through the hall.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for.